Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Dover's Blood Board meeting to order on Tuesday, February 18th at 6:30 PM. First, we have public comments. And first, I'd like to introduce Leah Gabriel Potts, who is here, and she's the new GM of Mount Snow. Maybe she can give us a little of her background and this is John Han, we don't know.
Yes.
I'm Vicky Capitani, and this is Sarah Shippey, the vice chair. So.
All right. Well, hi, everyone.
Stand on this side. And you're used to that, right?
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, hi, everyone. I'm Leah Gabriel Potts. I'm the new general manager of Mount Snow. It's really an honor to be here in such an incredible, beautiful place. So I started skiing when I was two and a half, and my parents put me on skis at what was what used to be called Ski Liberty. And skiing has been a huge part of my life in developing me as a young person, learning independence on the mountain. So much of what I learned that prepared me for life was through skiing. So it's been a lifelong passion. I'm one of those people that when I lived in New York, if I could get a three-day weekend and get somewhere and ski, I would do it even if I was by myself. And so it's just been a lifelong passion. So it's so wonderful to be here and to be part of this community and to be able to to enjoy my passion also along with work. So I actually started my career studying mechanical engineering at the Naval Academy. And then I became an F-18 pilot. So I was one of the first female F-18 pilots in the Navy. I got a lot of operational experience while I was doing that. So when I was an F-18 pilot, I also was the aircraft division officer for my squadron. So I was responsible for seventeen, sixty million dollar jets. So I'm used to being in environments with lots of moving parts. In my career in the Navy, I was also the safety officer in my squadron, public affairs at one point. And then I got recruited to go and train as a CIA-trained clandestine human intelligence officer. I deployed with Navy SEALs in Afghanistan, so more operations worked there. And then when I got out of the Navy, I decided that I wanted to get into journalism. This was all aligned in my for my passion for the US, which has always been my my works always had to be aligned with my passion. So passion for the country went into journalism and did that for about ten years, taught me a lot about understanding both sides of every story and wanting to be able to tell both sides of every story and really understand different perspectives. And then I got asked to go back and serve in government. I served at the State Department as the US Special Envoy for Global Engagement. And then after that, I started doing consulting and really working on my business skills. And I ended up going to become a Sloan Fellow at MIT. I studied entrepreneurship. So I got my MBA at MIT, and I focused on business analytics, AI, machine learning, and got my certificate in data analytics at MIT. And then I was trying to figure out how do I align my passion with skiing with my future in the business environment? And ended up getting hired to come here and to be the GM of Mount Snow. So it's been an incredible opportunity to come here and to meet this community. I've been really grateful for the people who welcomed me in. I feel like we have a lot of great work to do at Mount Snow, and I'm really looking forward to getting to all of you. And thank you all for having me tonight and for the welcome. Happy to answer any questions.
Come anytime.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, whatever. Okay. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Has anyone from the Rotary Club reached out?
Yes, yeah. Okay. I was supposed to go to Rotary Club, and it was the same day as the NSA's morning practice.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm gonna go to the next Rotary. Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
I gotta figure out.
Somebody, if somebody needs to get muted. Can you mute? Thank you. Other public comments? Um, I have one thing I'd like to bring up under public comments. I ran into one of our dog wardens, and he's been called out quite a bit for dog-related issues. So it's Richard Sadlack, and he suggested that maybe he have some identification so that when he knocks on people's door, they might open the door and be less afraid that he might be somebody doing something that he shouldn't be doing. So we discussed potentially just getting him some business cards, also getting our other dog warden business cards so that they can look official. They should. I mean, if you're knocking on somebody's door, you should have some identification. Yes, Sarah?
Should we get them the badges that we have for the people who work the elections? They have name badges that they wear. Should we should we order a badge for them to wear?
So Andy, do you order those?
So the most recent ones, I believe, Eric Ward, the chairman.
He was he was open to badges or, you know, a badge or business cards. So I think I think I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I I think that it it well, it's important. Yes.
I mean, most of our folks that are out in the field per se have some sort of uniform. So wouldn't it be bad if he had something, say, a jacket and a shirt?
Yeah.
If he's going to people's houses or out and about, it would probably be good to have a supportive, like, houndish. So some kind of thing. So it's not something.
Okay. I think a badge is a great idea. You can put it on your jacket, put it on your whatever. So can we get that done? I don't think it's gonna cost us very much at all, but I think for their safety and for their, you know.
Perception of the community.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Any other? Yes, Rich.
Badge doesn't really mean much. I can go on calls and buy hundred badges.
So what would you suggest?
Well, badge and an ID code. And we haven't really made an entire department. So, you know, just have like an official kind of code.
Dog warden.
And then that way, you know, you can show show some ID.
I like it.
Visit contact. So if you guys want, we can do that. I'll get that set up. I don't know who these algorithms are anymore.
Richard.
Yeah, just run the east over.
Yeah.
Thinking, hanging on that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Give me names or just let me know.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other public comments? All right, moving on to the transfer station for the highway department. And this is proposed new rates for the transfer station. Travis?
Well, I came up with some proposed rates, rate increases for the transfer station. The town is we have the lowest rates around. It's time to it's time to bump them up a little bit here because, you know, we're we held off as long as we could raise the rates, but it
So can you go over these prices?
Sure.
So that the public can hear it?
I forwarded the board these these price, these proposed prices, and we can put them up for discussion or however you guys want to do it. The passes, regular pass twenty dollars. Senior pass ten dollars, commercial business pass forty dollars. Household bags go up to five, senior bag up to two. Demolition material should go up to fifteen per yard. I believe we're at thirty per yard now. Lawn mowers, thirty dollars, mattresses forty each. We're they charge us a lot for those every every time that it's dumped, and we end up eating a lot of them, so.
I think they charge forty-five. Is that right, Kevin?
I don't know where we get charged.
Your, yeah, for mattresses.
Yeah, Casella's gonna start at forty-five July 1st.
Okay. So they aren't charging us now?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of.
It's they're they're on there, but they're very bittersweet. They're not on every one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's mattresses in every every demo.
So if they're gonna go up to forty-five, then we should go up to forty.
That's fine. This is just.
Yeah, I just that's my feeling. We're gonna get charged forty-five. Yes.
Windham Solid Waste Management said there's like a double payment. There's a payment, and then when it's picked up, there's another payment. So it might be more. I think sometimes we should look into.
Hold on. Go.
So they obviously we get paid by the ton we pay by the tonnage of it going there, and then we get paid for the mattress. It's not like they take the tonnage of the mattress off. So we are getting kind of
Double.
Double build on it for the weight of the mattress, say fifty pounds. So it's not a lot, but yes, in theory, we are.
Will you investigate the mattress with with what the proposed rates are gonna be? Because we should not be below what we're gonna be charged. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, keep going.
Sixteen-inch tires and smaller, eight dollars each. Sixteen-inch rim, twenty-inch rim, ten dollars each, and twenty-inch rim and larger truck or tractor or twenty-five apiece on the tires. And then I have a list of three items, scrap metal, computers, electronics, TVs. Obviously, the recycling items, paper, bottle, cans, cardboard, and compost.
Yes, Dan.
I dropped off a commercial refrigerator and appliances. What are we getting for that? Like, you know, dishwashers.
I
You look on the town website.
Yeah.
It's eighteen dollars.
Eighteen for appliances?
Yeah. Okay. And some of that, well, refrigerators are different because we have to have the
Free on.
Free on move.
Then it goes in the dumps.
Yeah. So is that is that another one we should look at? Are they gonna start charging us more for appliances?
Um, we can.
We're just sort of.
Yeah.
That's that's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was it ten bucks to get the free on?
Oh, you have. So he's performing.
I like I just have those couple of personally have a couple of those questions. The mattresses and appliances in general, with the refrigerators being the second part of it. And where when would you propose starting these? I'm trying to.
Why? I I would do July first, whenever unless you guys feel or need to do it. You know, the next few meetings, that's fine too.
Joe?
Okay, a couple things too that I talked to Travis and I talked to Andy about is somehow figuring out to start paying the dump pass on July 1st as opposed to January 1st. So it's on the fiscal year. Makes a lot more sense. It's also easier to buy the dump permit at that time as opposed to around Christmas time when it's real busy to make it easier to dump, and it makes more sense because it's it doesn't. So we just have to have to figure out that too type thing. I have a couple suggestions on it, but I just think we should just sell, you know, people buying from the already sold, we just people that are buying for July for July 1st and after will pay the higher fees. People that have already paid for a half of a year and buy it whatever for the next last six months is paid on last year's rate. That they just make it easy. And then we just have to figure out the dump sticker thing, which I think we can figure out somehow. So it shouldn't be too big of a deal. I think it's time to do it.
I have no trouble moving to the fiscal year side.
And then waiting till July 1st. I do not think we should wait till July 1st. I think we should do it. We should vote it in tonight because we are already.
Well, we don't have all the rates.
I I get that.
So that makes it hard to to vote something in. But we could wait. You're gonna have multiple meetings in the next few weeks, so we have lots of opportunity.
There's no waiting. We've got here.
Dan?
So then if we're kind of like for rating the original past week, then they're gonna wait all the way through another year before they pay twenty dollars. Makes it confusing.
No matter what, it's gonna be confusing because we're changing it. I'm just saying, we just have to do it. We have to stop thinking that it's gonna be confusing. Just come up with, this is what it's gonna be, and everyone's on the same page. People are gonna whine about it and not like it. It is what it is type thing, so. It's just gonna make it easier because I I always hear that it's so hard to buy the dump permits at Christmas time because it's so busy. So it alleviates that whole issue. People are most of the regulars will be coming there. It's only gonna be a couple people. It'll always be done type thing. Also, we don't have to buy the dump permit. I have to take it away from Andy, dump permit, you know. Unless Andy wants to keep doing it. There's really no reason, two things, to be sending any dump permits in the mail to anybody. They shall be purchased at the dump because you actually have to go to the dump to get it. There may be some times where someone needs to send it for whatever reason to get it to the house or whatever. I get that, but we should try to get away from that because of standpoint, we're selling the permit for twenty dollars, and we're spending a dollar in postage to send it off. Doesn't make any financial sense, I think, on basically something. So we have to be more efficient with what we're doing at the moment. Thank you.
Sarah?
What are the current prices for the senior, regular, and commercial stickers?
So the stickers are all ten bucks current. There's no differentiation between the senior and the regular. It's just that the senior pass gets you the reduced rate when you bring bags of garbage up to the transfer station, the first two per week or a dollar instead of the three dollars.
And then the commercial is what now?
Twenty bucks.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so let's get this on the next agenda and try to finalize them.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
All of those rates that you mentioned and
Thank you.
I I have I wanna do like on the appliances, Wilmington does twenty twenty dollars per appliance with refrigerants, and then it's half price for the other appliances that you're not paying to have somebody take, you know, your dishwasher.
Yeah.
Other ones. We could I could break it up into that two groups like Wilmington has done, all we can three dollars one.
I'd break it up mine personally.
Sarah? So I just I apologize, but so the senior rate's not gonna change?
Yeah.
Senior's still gonna pay ten?
For the pets.
For the pets.
For the pass, it won't change for seniors. It'll go up for everybody that's.
Gotcha. Okay, cool.
But the bag rate is gonna double to two.
Right. Kevin?
Yeah, if somebody goes to Ken at the transfer station and wants to buy a pass, how do we know? And how will he know if they're a resident of Dover?
So.
Yes, Ed.
You'll be an answer.
Yes.
So more or less, Kevin, the way I know is I just ask people. There's no way to check, you know, not everybody who's a resident owns property. Not everybody who rents is on the voter list. There's no, there's no real good way to make sure somebody is a resident. What I do is I call it a pad of paper. I ask them their name. I write it down, then I ask them their physical address. And I figure if you're gonna lie to me enough to make up a physical Dover address, you know, that's, you know, one percent of the population's gonna do that. But otherwise, because otherwise, there is no way to check, actually. Follow them home.
Survey all of them. Is that are you good there, Kevin?
No, that makes sense. I didn't know if you were asking an address or whether they just went in and anybody who asked got one. No idea.
Yeah, it's it's
Okay.
It's not a high.
All right. Are we all good with that?
Yep.
All right. Next, we're gonna go to the annual certificate of highway mileage. Uh, this is
Do you have the original?
Andy has filmed.
Okay.
So this is something you do every year. There are any changes, are there? Yes, point three six of class three. Where's that?
So Travis and I put together that package of documents you have put to it. Pony Ridge Road. Basically, it's road that, you know, we're not adding anything to our understanding of what's a town road. But B Trans didn't have, you know, a third of a mile on the end of Pony Ridge Road on their highway map. So they reached out to me and said, hey, you know, is this correct? It doesn't look correct. They have access to Google Earth now apparently and can overlay that. I said, no, you're right. That's that's incorrect. We need to add some mileage. So I put together the, you know, the laying out of the road and everything, all the documentation they needed and calculated the mileage. The only real difference it makes is, you know, there's federal and state funding. It depends upon how much mileage of roads you have. So it's important to get every little bit you can on there. So that's what that is.
Okay, so the whole board can sign this, and then Andy's gonna sign it.
Yeah.
So I make a motion that the board sign the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February 10th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Scott, can you come in and sign something?
Yes, tomorrow.
So I'm good, Scott.
Thank you. Here. Okay. Next, we're moving on to the certificate of compliance. This is town and road and bridge standards and network inventory. Again, another annual thing. Thank you.
I make a motion that the board signs the certification of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network inventory document dated February 18th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Scott, are you gonna vote? Scott, no vote.
Sorry. Aye.
Wait. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Now we have the town, road, and wait. Town, road, and bridge standards. We're gonna I know, right? Again, the whole entire board can
Yeah.
Do this. We are yes, yes, yes.
There's no changes.
No changes.
Okay, make a motion that the board signs the town road and bridge standards.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Once we get the signatures on, we'll have feedback from the Wyndham Solid Waste District meetings. So did vote, did did you go to that?
No.
Okay, so Kevin, do you want to give us?
I went to it.
Did you go to?
Minutes.
For five minutes?
I thought it was.
I'm sorry. Did you go, Travis? You weren't able to.
I was a little busy.
Yeah. Okay, so which one which one of you wants to talk about it? Kevin?
RFP for waste management hauling. I guess it was originally designed for individual towns to do, but the meeting we had two weeks ago today, I believe, in Townsend, it seemed the consensus was that there would be more leverage if towns did a joint one together. So presently, that's where the movement is on that right now. The Wyndham Solid Waste Management District will be sending out a form after their lawyer approves it, asking towns if they would like to participate in this joint effort to sign it. It's a non-binding agreement. However, all towns are still going to be responsible for doing their own negotiating. So each town is quite a bit different. There's a lot of moving pieces. Some towns, there's four or five towns that are in the middle of contracts with Casella right now as well. And we're not sure how that will work. But Dover wants to join the group, and I guess the real leverage that comes from it is that it's hopeful that it will awaken bigger companies to perhaps bid on what Casella is now doing solely in the area. Really, all that we have is waste management in Swansea, New Hampshire, and USA Waste and Recycling in Hatfield, Mass. that have the capability of covering Wyndham County the way Casella's doing it. And I really think it's pretty unlikely they're gonna be able to do it any cheaper considering they're coming from much further away. And there is the possibility that we could awaken a sleeping giant and rates could go up, but I I don't know. It's it's probably a good thing to go out and shop and see if anybody else wants to bid. And if we have six or seven or eight towns that agree to do it simultaneously, all in the same form, then then maybe one of those bigger groups will will come in and make a bid.
Yes, Dan.
So my input to them was they asked about if we had a contract with Casella. And at the same time, I was texting Travis, and he said that the actual contract we had was with Triple T that expired, and Casella hasn't asked us for any kind of contract as of yet. And also that we also have waste managements in King, which is also one of the people that were working with with some of the people from Brownburg are sending their stuff to King. So the general recommendation was, which they send out this letter to all of us. We decide whether we want to do it or not. And as a collective bunch, they feel that we would do better. And I tend to agree.
Well, it could go either way. But are we, you said it was a non-binding for the towns or for Casella or for whoever the vendor might?
Oh, for the for the towns, the the agreement would be non-binding. You'd send out the RFP, and like most of them, you don't have to accept it. You can turn it down. However, the the problem is, you know, Casella may look at the rates and decide to adjust them. Who knows? I mean, they may get nervous because of it and lower them, but I I don't see that. I I think they've got this area pretty well so tight, you know?
Yes, Dan.
Five or six of the towns already have agreements with Casella.
Then their rates are higher than ours. Their their rates are higher than ours. Ours was apparently some of the very lowest. That's the concern. Yes.
I didn't get to go to the meeting. I'm just directly to Kevin. Was our biggest concern is is obviously the cost, Kevin. But the biggest concern we have is the turning way of people because we can't get the dumpster taken away in a timely manner. Are other towns that you, do they talk about that at all? At the meeting?
Not so much, I don't think. You know, Dover is kind of considered the Cadillac or Rolls Royce of transfer stations for what we serve and what we have. And, you know, Christmas time, it was pretty nervous when I was down there looking at both compactors bursting at the top. And I was talking to Ken, and I'm saying, are you gonna get these things out of here? You're gonna, where are you gonna put everything tomorrow morning? That that is an issue, and that's probably why you don't want to go with a smaller hauler who doesn't have that capability. But no, I I I've never really got the sense that towns had a real problem getting them done on their 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 roll-offs dumped out on time. I mean, we've got two demolition boxes right now. I think that solves a lot of that problem. getting them done on their their um, their roll-offs dumped out on time. I mean, we've got two demolition boxes right now. I think that solves a lot of that problem, doesn't it?
Travis is shaking his head yes.
I I'm not gonna comment on that. I'm gonna say it has, but it it's still, it's still the management of it on our end and on the way, on the wayside. You know, it's, it still happens because they still aren't picking up the box. But yes, it is definitely better, for sure. But that's what, I guess the other towns don't have the volume that we have.
Yes.
We have a pretty good consistency that, you know, it it shouldn't happen. For instance, I went there six or seven times this year, and three or four of them, I got turned away with demo stuff. So that doesn't, you know, and I don't go there a lot. That seems like a lot. And I hear a lot from our residents that they get turned away because it is so. That's my more concern that we get some sort of, you know, I haven't personally, I don't know if Travis has ever personally said, what can we do to be on a more timely basis than waiting, right? I mean, have we ever, like, hey, what can we do? Whoever asked, or they just say, oh, sorry, this is the way it is?
Talk to the I have to sell off. And we, because we were running into dumpsters, some of them weren't getting sent out too early.
Right.
We weren't doing the competition that we normally were, but our hand truck piece items. Um, and him and I, we got to sell on the talks, and you know, we had considered to, you know, unless I could get our tenant to make sure that they were full, we had considered setting up a plan where they were changed out. We know how many days we could go. We know how many days a a previous tenant could go before it needed to be done. If they needed to be swapped out. Besides the holiday weekends and, you know, those are, those are a little different, but you can go a number of days and then you need a whole swap out, no matter what. So.
Yes, Dan.
We take in work hours and all the other towns combined.
We are a large.
Let's see what uh they're gonna send out to the towns, and we'll uh revisit. But thank you. Thank you for attending, Dan and and Kevin.
I was there five minutes.
You you guys did see the RFP though, right?
Yeah, I did see the RFP. I thought, I thought it, I'll be honest, Kevin, I thought it was for all the towns. I didn't realize they wanted us each individually to go out.
Yes, Travis.
I just wanna say thank you, Kevin, for keeping me updated on a lot of that and and Dan as well. They both reached out to me multiple times. I know I haven't been great at getting back and been a little bit busy, but I I do appreciate it. I just wanna say that.
Yeah, actually, I think I I have the RFP too. So, um, well, okay. Yeah, sometimes things go and I, lots of times I'll get an email and it's like, I'm not aware of this, so. All right, anything else, Travis? Well, thank you, guys, and hopefully you guys can get some sleep. Um, now we're gonna move to the assessor, approved signed certificate for no appeal or suit pending. Linda?
Hey, everyone. So basically, that closes out two thousand twenty-four. And uh, I already signed it. Um, it goes in with the grand list to the town clerk. I believe the clerk signs it as well.
Uh, yes, the select men or select men or mayor, uh, the listers or assessors, yes. So, and then the town clerk.
Yeah.
And here's one that Linda has pre-signed.
So is it door or an air?
Well, they give you a lot of lines, so I'd say everybody could. Well, I mean, is it, is it a lot of lines? Select men, select men or mayor.
So it only goes to only you and I?
Yeah.
Those forms are a little outdated.
You and I.
I I'm going, I'm going that way anyway. Uh, so can I have a motion to sign this?
I make a motion that we sign the certificate of no appeal or suit pending.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Super. Oh, sorry, you waiting for me?
No, 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 we're waiting for us to sign.
For the sign, okay.
Close that. Everybody's paying attention, yeah. And Scott, you gotta have a lot of signatures tomorrow.
All right, sounds good.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda under the assessor is permission to hire hire a file clerk.
Yeah, so um, with the reorganizing in the file room, there's lots uh to do still, and uh I was told that there was a possibility of someone maybe looking for some work. I had also reached out to Lori at Dover School to see if there was a a parent or a caregiver that was interested. Um, but I'm assuming that probably an ad would need to be run at this point. Um, so I did, I just emailed something to Jeanette. And just a basic ad asking for, you know, someone to do some filing, other tasks, you know, maybe sending out mailings when need be. I did put twenty dollars an hour. I don't think you, anybody's gonna work for less than that. About three mornings, three mornings a week. Or flexible, I'm flexible.
So something like ten to twelve hours? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I, yeah, like maybe three days a week for however. It's it's kinda hard to say. Um, once things get rolling, there's still gonna be stuff to do with the reappraisal ongoing for the next couple of years.
And, did you get that, Jeanette? From Linda?
I did, just.
Okay.
Just got it.
Did that work? It worked, okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't print this.
Um, so is there a brief job description in it?
Do you want me to read it to you?
Sure.
Or do you wanna read it?
Uh, I, whatever, they can probably hear you better.
Okay, well, she has looking for some extra money in your pocket for tomorrow. The assessor's office in Dover is looking for someone to help around the office, filing, sorting property cards, other tasks as needed. Hours flexible, twenty dollars per hour, three mornings per week, driver's license needed. And just phone number.
I'm not sure why I wrote that, but I thought with spring inspections coming up, it, that might be a person to pull in the car, so uh, there's a second person.
So any specific skills that this person might need, Linda?
Uh, they might need to know the alphabet. And count, seriously, I mean, filing is definitely a skill. Um, and from the last few people that were there, uh, directions did not seem to get all the way through. Um, so I could, I just wanted something to present to you tonight. I could write something up with, in a little better detail. Um, organi- organizing skills, helpful, um, able to follow direction. I don't know if it needs to be that precise. Um.
I think considering the, in my opinion, considering the multiple people who have come and gone through your office, I think being specific is is pretty important. So that they are aware that what kind of job it really is and.
Right.
Yeah, and it.
Have management expectations.
Yes, so. Anything you can do to tighten that up a little bit would be useful, I think. Yes, Sarah?
Okay.
Do you wanna, I'm not saying instead of the phone number, but do you wanna maybe provide your email? And or ask them to send a resume? Or do you have, wanna do a brief, like a job application form they could fill out, something so that you can so you're not just getting phone calls like, yeah, I'm interested, and then you're still?
Right, okay, I could, I could do that. I could come up with, you know, a a basic application, probably. The phone number's on there. I could add the email. Uh, actually, maybe I'll take the phone number off and just leave the email. Or maybe Tabby could help me do a fillable uh, application. They can just do it right there and send it. Yeah.
I'm sure she can. Yes, Jim.
Would it be helpful to add general office skills of plus?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, that that's a good idea. That covers a lot of.
It does. Thanks, Jim.
So I guess the question is, Linda um, wants to get this out there so she can get, get, so do we wanna let her do it? Should she run it by her liaison, which is Scott?
I was gonna say I could jump in and help you, Linda.
Awesome. Thanks, Scott.
So is everybody good with Linda? Looking for a uh, an assistant? Okay, all right, a file clerk, not?
Yeah, not really an assistant, like I wouldn't have them doing.
File clerk, yes.
Yeah, more, more basic.
Fine. So I think we can move forward, and thank you for trying to help her out, Scott. I appreciate it.
Yes, me too. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving over to the Planning Commission slash Water Task Force. First, approve, approval to apply for municipal planning grants.
Okay.
Yes, Patrick.
Um, so with the completion of the town plan, one of the principal action items in the plan was to start comprehensive update of the zoning bylaws to implement some of the things that were identified in the plan, but also to qualify for, I think there were some changes in the law at the state in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, that in order to qualify for this temporary act to quickly exemption that was allowing in this legislation, you have to go through this bylaw again. Um, we asked uh Matt Bockler at Wyndham Regional to give us, based on his experience, an estimate for what he thought it would take in terms of their time um, to do their portion of it. Tabby also reached out to the town attorney and and got an estimate from him, and then kind of, you know, padded a little bit, to be honest with you. Um, and then so what we came up with was what I included in the spreadsheet uh that Jeanette circulated, which was a budget of uh thirty thousand three hundred for Wyndham Regional and three thousand for the town attorney for a total of thirty-three thousand three hundred. Um, the maximum grant, as I understand it, on the program is thirty thousand. And whatever we spend, the town is responsible for ten percent of that as of the match. So what we would like to do um, is get the approval of the select board to allow the planning commission to go ahead and submit the application for municipal planning grant to pay for this outside support that we're gonna need to do the bylaw update. I mean, the bottom line is this, if we don't have that, then we won't really have the expertise to do it ourselves. So uh, we really need that.
Or we would have to rely heavily on the town attorney, which would be more expensive.
So that's the request.
Thoughts? Go for it.
Just for the town plan, right?
The, this is for the zoning bylaws.
Zoning bylaws.
Town plans done. And Wyndham Regional helped us go through the town plan, and and we, I think that worked out very well. So.
I make a motion to authorize the planning commission to apply for the municipal planning grant with an estimated budget of three, thirty-three thousand three hundred dollars subject to up to a maximum, the grant amount up to a maximum of thirty thousand. And the town responsible for any over.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I got a quick question. Um, what's the course of action if we don't get the grant?
Uh, I, should I say?
Yes.
I mean, I think Sarah, Sarah pointed out that we would, we would have to go sit down with the town attorney and come up with a more complicated, more expensive way to get there. Or we don't update the bylaws and we don't meet some of the requirements that that we have to qualify for um, qualified for some of the things that the state is, would say, if we had these changes, we would qualify for other things.
I think they're pretty, um, they're not a hard game. Really looking forward to getting towns moving in the direction that we might be moving in, and so, and it needs to be done anyway, so.
It hasn't been updated in a long time.
Yeah. So let's hope that we get the grant.
Is this, is this the uh same organization that gave us the grant to work on the town plan?
Yes.
Yeah, um, some of these grants that I've seen, um, I mean, you can sometimes get them two years in a row, but if there's another town that hasn't gotten one yet, I've seen that town be favored in the process before a second town gets two in a row, for instance. So keep your fingers crossed.
Patrick.
Yeah, I just had to address that, Kevin. Um, yeah, it's it's, there's never a certainty, right? Um, but I think that that the way that the the, whatever the the state agency is, they look at this as the next piece of the work that continues from the work of the town plan, if you will.
That makes sense.
Do the town plan, then you have to do that. Well, okay, otherwise, this would sit for a while until we had another way to get there.
Right. Thank you.
So, did you make a motion?
I did.
And you got a second?
I'm checking.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, also, under the plan, the Water Task Force Plan Commission review, accept recommendation for the Water Task Force, from the Water Task Force for the engineering firm for feasibility study.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, on that, for Water Task Force, first of all, Eric, thank you for managing the RFP process for us. We received three responses to the RFP from three uh engineering firms, DuBois and King, DeFrane Group, and Iron Creek Engineering. We, uh, the, the RFP specifically targeted um with a request to update the twenty-ten feasibility study for the municipal water system. So they all had access or were familiar with the system. They all were able to develop a proposal that met the guidance we had given in terms of the budget that uh the town had set, uh, which was under seventy thousand dollars, I think, for the, for the project um, of updating, of the update, of the feasibility study. The members of planning commission, uh, the Water Task Force reviewed each of the proposals. I don't know if I got to review them. Uh, we had a preliminary meeting, then we uh scheduled interviews with each of the three firms. Each of the three firms sent representatives in person. Uh, we spent somewhere between an hour, an hour and a half, and interviewed each of them. Um, and uh, and, you know, we had the opportunity to ask questions and engage in a dialogue. We all, we all felt that all of the firms that came in, uh, were technically capable of doing the proposal. What, one of the things we were really trying to evaluate in, in uh, in the interviews was to get a good sense of their, their strategies for community engagement and how effective the people that we were meeting with would be in community engagement, because that's gonna be so important to completing a successful study. So uh, each bid we received was four fixed fee that included the price of uh their personnel plus subcontractors and expenses. Do we read the mouse out from the bids?
Um, these weren't sealed.
No, but I think we really only are, we only really relevant one is the one that we ended up recommending.
Right, so just the one we ended up, we ended up, so what we recommended, uh, what the uh, Water Task Force voted unanimously to recommend to the select board was to contract with the DeFrane Group. Um, their, their uh proposal contemplated a total of sixty-five thousand dollars fixed fee including um, including allowances of, including six thousand dollars for their subcontractors, two hundred and forty dollars for expenses, and fifty-seven, fifty-eight thousand seven sixty in their fees, so it all adds up to sixty-five thousand even. And that was, we clarified that that was a fixed fee. Um, you know, so their expenses are up, or that's on them, that's not on us. Um, so uh, then we also considered that because we have to then negotiate a contract with them, we thought it was a good idea to have a backup. And we recommended DuBois and King as a backup. Uh, if for some reason we can't reach, reaching. Uh, if for some reason we can't reach, reaching agreement with DeFrane. Do you want me to know who their, theirs? Uh, their proposals?
I think that.
Are you pulled on to it?
Yeah, we, you're gonna have to come back if we can't get to an agreement, so with, with DeFrane.
Okay.
Comments, questions? Andy?
Uh, yeah.
Patrick?
Um, you mentioned that one thing you were concerned about when you, uh, when you reviewed the bids was the public outreach and public input? And how they would facilitate that? Was there a difference between the three? Did you base your decision on that? Did they tell you what that might look like? I think you're right to focus on it. Thank you for focusing on that. I just wanted to give a little more of an idea of what to expect and, and whether that was the reason for the decision on, on your petition.
I, I, I don't think it was the, at the sole reason, but it was an important reason. The, the. Some of it is subjective. You know, the people you're meeting, who, when we ask them off, who will be the person who will take the point in the discussions? So that person had to be, and in all three cases it was. So to some extent, I, you know, if you ask everyone, there was a subjective, we had a discussion about the subjective sense of how would that person or these people connect with the town in terms of being in a public meeting, um, et cetera. Uh, we also asked and explored with each one of them things about their strategies for outreach for surveys or, or you know, mailing postcards to get people to, you know, just walking through what, what their priorities would be in. But one of the things that I, I mean. I, I, I can't really put a pin and say that's the reason we decided. In the DeFrane case, uh, what is interesting is first of all, all three firms had someone with familiarity with the twenty-ten study. Um, DeFrane is actually active in working with some of the condom complexes here right now, um, on their water issues. So they have some familiarity with the water conditions as they are today. And, and, you know, so you, there's just a ton of things that we talked about like that. There was no real specific. Gee, Andy is the best presenter we're going to go with, you know, that, we didn't do that.
Right, right.
Sarah? I would also just wanna add that we checked references on all three. And one of the, one of the pertinent questions was their outreach with the, in, with on the projects that we were calling about, so that we had input from other people on that as well.
Thank you.
I also liked it the, the closest in terms of being right here and.
Jemaiter.
Yeah. So a lot of familiarity with the area.
We, we looked at, too, um, the, at the average hourly rate of the personnel involved. This wasn't a deciding factor, but you know, if, if you wanna look at, you know, they're, they're closer than the average hourly rate, so that if there's follow-up work or other things that come out of this, you know, it's, it doesn't matter for this one, but it's something that, I think, just from an intangible perspective, that was something to keep in mind.
Okay. Yes, Sarah?
Can I just add one comment? I, I, myself and I, I think the other people in the room felt like, no matter which team we chose, we were, we were not gonna be making a mistake. They were all very close in quality, in, in all the, the areas that we were looking at. So I, I don't. I don't feel like we could be wrong in our choice.
Absolutely agree. There was no bad choice. There was just a harsh choice.
Yeah.
Dan?
What's the timing of this?
Uh, we would move, as soon as possible to start contracting. Um, we need to talk about how we do that, because I know that. The goal would be to have them finish their work within the next year, hopefully so it's done before town meeting, next, the next town meeting, so that we have something to present or share with.
So. Do we wanna make a motion?
Uh, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Water Task Force on, and hire DeFrane to complete the feasibility study.
In the amount of?
In the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. And then this is like not part of the motion. I'm just asking the question of whether we ask them to supply a contract and we send it to our attorney or vice versa.
I think that might be a good way to start. Um, do we remember, remember what we did last time? Rich, what did we do?
We had a contract submitted. This, we signed it on, thank you, once we turned.
So they, they gave us.
It's a standard contract, yeah.
Okay, but I, I. I think we should probably.
Oh, you should now.
Yeah.
With, with the, with the contract to be supplied by DeFrane.
Yes.
Second. Any other discussion?
Oh, should I add? And subject to the approval of the town attorney.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then just a point of clarification. Um, so in, in this, we're gonna ask them for a contract. Is it, it's, it's a contract, they negotiate the contract with the select board, or is the Water Task Force? No, we're not really, I don't know if we have that.
So.
Yeah.
So you, so we have a price, it's not, I don't understand what you mean by negotiate a contract.
Well, there's other terms, terms of timing. I mean, I don't think we're gonna write them a check for sixty-five dollars.
No, no, yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's all the terms that we have to have.
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, so and, and so our attorneys are, are used to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So yes, we should definitely do that. And we don't usually pay out, we don't pay anything a, all upfront. We do, you know, schedule completion steps where they get reimbursement.
Okay. Do, do I have, just to confirm, do I work through Eric, or is this not, means to the select board, or do we, uh, we?
Uh, I think the select board. Yeah.
The select board has to sign.
Yeah, I know, right? Hold on. And, and he's got his hand up, very nice.
Just, just as a heads up, um, you know, I remember the contract for the chosen rec, uh, plan. Uh, I remember very specifically that the contract said, you know, X number of public meetings and surveys and so forth, so you can look for that in your contract. I just wanted to throw that out there. And if it's not in there, you might ask about that. Just, and why not?
Cause that's really, that, that's another big part of the outreach, the, the meetings and the, you know, public, public informational meetings.
I think we specified that in the RFP, we were off schedule, so when they bid, they bid to, to a meeting.
And it was, it was covered in the proposals now.
So Jeanette, are you good with the motion? Did somebody second it? What other, what other um, conversation questions do we have at this point? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I want to ask.
Yeah.
Patrick to ask DeFrane to send the contract to Jeanette.
He can send it to, to Patrick, so Patrick can take a look at it and see if it follows the guides of what you guys have put forward, because she's not aware of what you guys were looking for necessarily. And then we can push it over to Jeanette to send it to our attorneys.
Last process question for now. Should one of us, I guess, notify the other firms of?
Let's see where this, uh, you know, let's see what we get. Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay. New business, code of municipal ethics training. So there's a new law that went into place. Are you more familiar with this than I am, Jeanette? I mean, I've got what you get. Uh, so we all. All municipal officers must take a municipal ethics training course with, by, the date is September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and then must do it again every three years. Uh, new members have to take it within a hundred and twenty days. So, and this is, I, this is gonna be online, too, I believe, right? Yes. Um, municipal officer are a lot of different people.
Yeah.
It could be the legislative body, uh, quasi-digital body of the municipality. Individual that holds a position or exercises the function of any of the following positions in, in or behalf of the town, of the municipality. Advisory, like a budget committee member, auditor, building inspector, cemetery commissioner, chief administrative officer, clerk, collector of delinquent taxes, department heads, first constable, listener or assessor, mayor, moderator, planning commission member, road commissioner, town, Dover, town or city manager, treasurer, village of town or town trustee, trustee of public funds, or water commissioner. So about, a, a lot of the people in this room have to go through this. So, um. Hopefully, they will give us more information about the online.
We don't have a link yet.
It's not in here.
Yeah.
No. So the goal is to identify conflicts of interest. And, you know, understand when, when you're having a conflict of interest, I guess. So. Also. So with more, but we all need to go through this.
Yeah, I think on the, um, that email, there is a link that, that, to the training.
Okay.
So the training on the municipal ethics is now available on their website.
Is this a, do we have to pay for this, Jeanette?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Have you done yours?
I did one.
Okay.
See, hold on, about forty-five minutes.
Okay.
It's, it's videos, slides.
And did they ask you where your position is and?
Um, I don't know. It's generic to to everybody.
So you don't, you don't have to register for it, so they don't know what you are doing?
Oh, they do, yes, they do, they do ask you your, when you register, yes. And we have to track. We need to have a log of who's, who took it and went ongoing, starting now and ongoing.
So.
You did your logs?
He did his.
I did my training.
As the ethics officer, you shouldn't even want to keep a log.
So somebody has to send out a log or?
Who's, 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 who's?
Marco?
Oh, I'm the liaison. That's it.
But.
Ah, there we go.
Well, I would think, you know. We need, we do need to get a log for when the people complete it, and so I don't know.
We just need a spreadsheet.
I can send a spreadsheet.
Thank you. I can give a little spreadsheet.
Yes, Marco.
They also provide one. I think they provide some.
Oh, okay.
You know, guides as to how.
Good.
So as the ethics officer, will they be reporting to you when someone registers and completes the course?
No.
So we register and complete, and then the person reports to you, and then you can backcheck it if need be?
No.
No, he's not, he just said he wasn't gonna do it.
As the liaison, I just, the go-between, between complaining and the state and the board and your folks, so. I mean, any one of us could be a tracker.
Since so many of these are employees.
Yeah.
That it needs to kind of be in our HR area, because if you don't do it, you got a problem. No, but honestly, right? I mean, because then we have a problem, then we, then, you know. Yeah.
I can work on it, Jeanette. I can get it going.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess my question though is if somebody can just tell you they did it. That doesn't necessarily mean that you know they did it.
I believe there is, you have to print out a certificate when you're done.
Yeah, perfect, okay.
Okay. Since you've been through it. Okay, just check.
Alright.
Do it, everybody.
Yeah.
Well, you have a really good, you know, certificate to do that, I imagine, just.
Okay, moving on to economic development. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six program guidelines, DAS, DO-IT, and DC-SIP.
Hey. So, uh, no major changes to any of the programs. Amounts are the same. As, has always been the case, DO-IT and signage improvement always comes in front of the board for approval. Um, and then again, for approval when the comes through the warrants, um, and then DAS, it's not what is held to that standard, what's eligible for the DAS program. It's not. Anytime you have a question, that comes.
So, um. DAS, as is this a new line designed to increase business in Dover? Because we had this question with one application. Hello?
It's, it's a, a clarified statement.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. But that, that, I did think that is what was added?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
I was just, I just wasn't remembering that thing about requiring receipts, but that's on.
Yep. And tax ID numbers are on these, I saw. So. Okay. Somebody wanna make a motion? Oh, Jim, sorry.
On all three of those drafts, I, I do have a comment. I've read them to them all at once before you vote. I've often heard from the board, that they, in the quote is, we have a fiduciary responsibility. And I had some back and forth emails with Eric about tightening up programs, you know, because I felt perhaps it may have been abuses of really applications not being compliant with the town guidelines. And I feel that all three of these drafts should be posted on the town website for thirty days. So the public may be able to weigh in on those. And perhaps make positive suggestions to how applications should be handled. How should, they should be processed. And the follow-up to ensure completion before a check is written. I don't believe that's the way it works now. And I have a couple of examples that may certainly brought up my curiosity. So there's a farm restaurant owner in the valley who owns also another place in Connecticut and purchased a place in Brattleboro to own it. So that's three places he owns. He had an application to get a point-of-sale system. Which I assume is gonna be in Dover. That application was approved. Voted on unanimously. And if you read all the documents, that point-of-sale system went to Connecticut. It wasn't leaving to Dover.
So Dover doesn't have it?
I don't know. So I don't know if that was ever followed up. My second example is, is another business in town that received a grant of three thousand dollars. And the document, documentation for the payment that was provided was just a line that said paid in cash. And that paid in cash went to either a firm or an individual. I can't remember which. In Michigan. Which, probably in this day and age is nobody in business that pays that kind of money in cash. So these questions come up. You know, was the work done? Is there anything in this to look at? Could be a hundred percent wrong. I don't know. But I think the public should be able to weigh in on the guidelines before the select board votes on. But I think the public should be able to weigh in on the guidelines before the select board votes on.
So, the point of sale, did anybody check it, no Snow Republic, that?
I, we didn't physically go in there, not.
It probably went to all three.
Hey, it, it could have, or it could have been shipped to the home base in Connecticut and delivered to Dover, like it, there's, you know.
Yes, Jim.
That certainly could be a valid explanation, I'm not saying it was anything devious on it. But it's something that needs to be looked into and followed up on, in this whole process. I did, I've seen. Uh, checks cut on invoices, not unpaid invoices, just on the invoice. Generally, it does a bad way to do business.
Yeah, I agree that the invoices should be paid, particularly, I, I agree with that, I, I feel that, you know. How do you know that that person ever paid the vendor or ever going through with it necessarily with some of those things?
I don't think there's a downside to asking for public input, I mean, we're. Seven of us, if you count the board and Shannon and Eric, have done our due diligence and tried to come up with. Scenarios where something might. Create an issue, but that's only seven brains, so there may be, there is definitely a benefit to asking. Somebody else may have a perspective that none of us do and, and point something out that we, we simply have overlooked. I do know that over the, the few years that I've been looking at these, that we have refined the application forms over time. Because we have, we learn. You know, we do something and we learn that that, that we overlooked in the area, and we fixed it, and we've made. Changes to these application forms over the years to reflect situations that have arisen. Where we have recognized that something wasn't completely covered. And, um, and I don't think anybody would, would claim that we have created the perfect application forms. And that there's no possible way that they could be improved.
Uh, Jim first.
And, and we'd have to say that as an individual. If I took any one of these applications and went to a bank and said, I need twenty five hundred dollars. They would laugh at me. We're not a bank, we're more of a giveaway program. And I long felt that these guys should be tightened up. The document, documentation should be rock solid, and there should be follow up to make sure with the. Payment. Is allocated for, is completed.
Yeah, you know, when we came out of COVID, went into COVID. Our previous economic development director, before he left. We asked him to put together the, the payments for all businesses, and we got hopes, there was no doubt. We got some people who claimed that they were business owners, and they weren't, but we had to do something. For as many people as possible, and we did do that, and it, it really, it was a time before anybody was getting any kind of money back in any way, shape or form. And we, we did have. Some people, and that, that woke me up to, you know, some people just, they're just gonna try to get money when they're really not a business. And, uh, we're aware of that, uh, I'm hoping that our business community isn't doing that. Because we, we, we want to support them, we want, we want them to succeed, we want this, this whole town to succeed. And so, um, yet there probably is some, I'm not sure it's as. And that was almost a very, it was a one page application, where the, um, whatever we called it back then. For the COVID relief money, Jimmy.
I'm not looking in hindsight, I'm looking forward.
Okay.
To make this the best it can be.
That's fair, that's fair.
The best it can be is bullet.
Bethany.
I just want to speak on behalf of the businesses that are members of the chamber, and I can tell you that these programs. Even if they are twenty five hundred dollars, make a huge impact on these small business owners who are usually short staffed. Who are doing eight different jobs, who are trying to keep their roots afloat, who have a huge impact on the Dover economy and the tourist economy here. And so, I'm sure there's room for improvement, because there always is for all of us, but I also think that. Um, they would all extend a great gratitude to all for offering these programs, too.
Do you have something? Um, no, I was gonna tell, say a little anecdote, but that's not really relevant.
Jim, and then Eric.
In response to Bethany. There are some very good projects that come out of this program. The program is morphed in some cases to buying individuals iPhones, drones. Haven't seen anything productive that really has come out of those purchases.
Okay, Eric.
So if I could just all respond to that piece first, and then, and then say what I was going to say. So in the case of the iPhone, that was, that purchase was made so that she could be mobile when she was doing her outside. Uh, stuff at the farmer's market, at the wine and harvest festival, it allowed her to make, make mobile. Um, as far as the drone goes, it fell under the marketing category that they wanted to be able to use that drone to get aerial photos. I mean, look at our marketing program, photos are absolutely key to making something like that happen, which is how the drone ended up in front of you guys. So, I think just the understanding that the way business is done is morphing and changing. Like, yeah, you're going to probably see some people asking for things for marketing or for, for being out and processing payments that isn't traditional. It's not your standard point of sale, so you're going to see those things, we don't put those things in front of the board unless we see the merit in them. Being those projects, as far as the public comment goes, I'm all for it, let's go ahead and put them up there. With the understanding that not every idea that we are presented is going to be included in these applications. So, you know, I, I say it all the time, if you ask. Ten different people in this town a question about our programs or economic development or something else, you're gonna get at minimum nine different answers. So while somebody might think that, you know, this is the be all end all, the answer to everything. Other people might not agree, so I think we put them up there, we get that public comment, it's something that we can either discuss at a public meeting. Or we can make our recommendations to you based on those comments that come in, but I like. I think just automatically adding anything that anybody says to these programs is not what.
Well, that could be really confusing.
So that was, that's my comment, but I, I'm, if, if you, we can absolutely post them and, um. We can set it up so that those public comments can be coming in, we'll compile them and, and then we can decide where to go from there.
Did you have anything to add, Jim?
To go back to Eric on the iPhone, that, the iPhone purchase, that money was cut. For an invoice, if you look further in that. It wasn't a fourteen hundred dollar, thirteen hundred dollar expenditure for my phone. It turns out to be a contract on that phone, so there was a monthly expense on that, it wasn't a one time purchase. I don't know if Eric looked into that deep enough to see that.
Is it like an annual contract?
It was an annual contract.
So. But it wasn't a commitment to pay the bill to it, no.
Can I just speak to some of this for a second?
You.
I will defer.
Shannon.
Bye. So, um, unfortunately, Jim has the advantage of having looked at five years of our programs in the last two weeks. Um, so some of the things that he's bringing up are programs and applications that were approved years ago. Um, that we felt were complete at the time. I already know some of the answers to the things he's brought up tonight, um, but. The bigger issue is that there has always been time to make comments on these applications. Um, whether it's the programs for the year or when the actual applications come in and that program's closing. Um, everybody's always had a chance, these have always been public and open. It feels a little personal to have everything come up at once. And that's frustrating for our business owners too, who are trying to. Make arrangements for this year's programs and get answers from us, and we don't frankly know what to tell them sometimes right now. Um, so it's just a little bit frustrating, um, but I'm always happy to research some of these answers, just like we have always sent you. The list of program awardees after a program has been voted on, um, but some of these things, yes. Snow Republic's Toast account is registered with their Connecticut business, so that's where that went to. Just like we get mail addressed to Marco, because that's the name on our bank card, um, these things happen. Everything gets looked at, um, personally, I don't care if someone has a paid invoice, that's not important to me. For some of our businesses, they can't actually pay that vendor until they get part of that money. And we've made special arrangements with some in the past for DO-IT, to work things in separate phases or whoever it is. Um, but I just want to note for our business owners that like, we certainly, there are times we flat out tell them no for things. And you guys never see those, um, but everything else we do are willing to go to bat for them. Um, and always do it in the spirit of these programs, um, with the support of our select board. And that's all.
Andy.
Um, so I just wanted to make a comment, I'm no expert by any means on any of this. But I was there, as some of you were, for, um. For the beginning of this and for the committee meetings before we hired an economic development director and assistant director. And, um, you know, the, the folks who got this thing passed in the first place were our business owners. Um, they got together and really lobbied for it, uh, to pass at town meeting. Um, the first time around, we voted it down because the business owners banded together and voted it down. It's clearly not snow, but everybody else, the owners was on board with that, so the second time around. They got together and decided this, this needed to happen, it was going to affect them more than anybody else, being a sales tax. Doesn't much affect me. But, uh, I remember in those committee meetings and trying to decide how to spend this money. And that questionnaire brought up, what's economic development? Um, they talked about these micro grants, these, you know, few thousand dollars and implementing this. Um, and philosophically, their idea was to get this money in the hands of business owners. And to do it on a local level, so that it wasn't anything like going to a bank for a loan. Um, so that it was, um. There is a, uh, there is a, a more of a, um. More of a homey feel to the thing, you're not talking about a lot of money. And, uh, and there's a degree of trust, now, th- these things get, you know, abused. Anytime you're handing out money, uh, it's gonna get abused, no doubt. Um, but having local people implement the programs, the fact that the, that the, um, that the amounts are not huge. Um, the, the main point is to spend the money that we receive, half a million a year or some such thing. You know, get that out the door and in the hands of local business owners. You're gonna have some loss, you're gonna have some dishonest people, but I think by, by and large, you know, to echo. What I, what my friend from the chamber said, th- these programs, particularly during COVID, which is when we probably had the most. Fraud, if you want to call it that, we also had a lot of people who, we saved their lives. Um, and I think, uh, you know, in terms of personnel. I, again, you know, Jim is much more knowledgeable on the business front than I am, but in order to track down each and every. Um, each and every award, and, uh, you know, I just envisioned hiring. You know, a private investigator or, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know what you do to ensure that, that these things are spent the way they're. They said they would spend them, um, maybe, maybe pay only a paid invoice, but. Like Shannon said, that's gonna exclude some of our true string businesses, I don't know what the answer is. I just wanted to put out there that historically, when we talked about this, the committee who set it up was okay. With it being, um, less, um. Onerous of process than you might, you might see at, at a bank or, or in a bigger institution with bigger awards. Just all I wanted to say.
Eric.
And two out of three out of these applications Shannon and I inherited when we took over these positions. And we have done our best to try to hone them in, to make them fit to what the spirit of those project, programs were actually supposed to be. So again, I, I, I have no problem with a public comment period, but, um, just with that re, the realization that not every public comment is going to make it into a program.
Yes.
Most economists will tell you that the federal government, when they give out money, there's always ten percent of it they could never count for. Not that that's good, but, you know, you can't account for every penny of grant money that you give out.
Any other comments?
I, I mean, I haven't spoken, but I, I just, um, what Andy was, I was gonna say, kind of what Andy was saying, so. About to not speak on it, but you were not gonna get, you are gonna have people that are not gonna do it properly, it's just. The thing, but I guess in the big scheme of things, it is somebody local that's getting the money locally and using it somewhat locally, so. Not like it's going somewhere far.
On a trip to Bermuda.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we, I do not have a problem, I think we do, we could put it out there. I, I don't have a problem with Jim is saying, and have a period where people can make some comments on, and, you know, that's, it's. It can definitely be done, it's not something that we should not do, so, I, I don't have a problem, I just don't know what the best. Method is, I mean, we have public meetings, I, I really do appreciate Jim McDivitt is at all of our meetings. Which is great, I would like to see more participation at our meetings, there are different things, so people are more aware. Of the different programs that are available to all of the businesses, so. I don't know what else we can do, we can do one more thing and see if we get some more comments out, I guess.
Yeah.
We've also rejected, many of the applications, the doubles they're paying on, you know.
And, and we don't even see all of them, a lot of them. Rejected and, and before they even make it toward us. So how will this affect the program cycle if we do what Jim is asking, asking us to do?
It shouldn't.
Yeah, we can post for thirty days on the website with little to no shame.
Yes, I've always brought these around in February or March, um, just to have them completed to send. The DO-IT application, which is the only, the first one with a date, um, out into the business worlds in April. So that they have some time before the May first application opens, um, but signage and DAS are rolling. Um, and I've just always done them as a July first start, um, so thirty days doesn't really affect it. It's just that we happen to have a random influx of new business owners who keep coming in and asking. Um, so it, it doesn't change the cycle, DO-IT is still May first to thirty first. Um, and the only program not in here is DTAP, because that one has been a fall opening since we created it.
All right, so, um, can you guys do that?
I'll post to the website tomorrow and provide my email for.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thanks. Uh, on to the Dover Town Office signage quotes, so we asked Eric to get. Another quote, which he has provided.
Uh, Shannon actually took over this for me as I worked on a few other things, uh, she reached out to two additional businesses. One of them could not seem to get their head wrapped around getting us a number, uh, so we received a second quote for six thousand one seventy five. Um, Taylor's quote at the Daily. And shock was forty seven ten plus the eleven hundred for a total of fifty eight ten. Um, Taylor's sign also included the, um, as you see on the Horace Hill. Um, as you see on the Horace Hill sign, the embossed Dover logo, which is actually clear coated with an automotive clear coat. Uh, to ensure its longevity. So, and that's on both sides of the the sign out front, so. Um, I think for what we're getting for a lower price, uh, i- in my mind, it's a no-brainer to go with the Dover sign shop for this project.
Yeah. So the, so, no, hold on, we have to make a motion. The total with the. Um.
So the sign out front was forty-seven-ten.
And then the.
Uh, I'm recommending the card HDU sign in the back, which was eleven-hundred. Close to five twenty-five, only because it will last longer. Those forty-seven-ten plus eleven-hundred, so five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars total.
I make a motion that we authorize the Economic Development Department to spend five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to provide the. Um. Signage for the town office. Second. As quoted by and contracting with Dover Sunshine Shop. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Uh, terms, sorry. Just so everyone's clear, the terms on that are fifty percent deposit with the remaining being paid once the signs are installed. That's how.
He's done a lot of work for him. Alright, so the next, there are event funding requests for twenty twenty-five under the chamber. And Shannon eh has issued um, a statement. She says, uh, as the current president of the Chamber of Board of Directors. Let the minutes show, these items were sent directly to Eric and I am recusing myself of any recommendation. So, that is. Where those are at. So, first up. We have the Vermont Blueberry Festival. And so, that for me, you wanna practice? Sure. So.
The Vermont Blueberry Festival is going to be, I wanna make sure I get the right dates, cause I'm messing them up. Um, July twenty-sixth through, or twenty-fifth through August third. Um, July twenty-sixth will be Dover Day this year. We'll do the parade again. Um, we'll do the kids fair again. We did that last year, and I think it was a really great hit. We'll do the teddy bear picnic, the touch a truck, the music mile, um. All the things that go with it. The craft fair, um, I would say last year was a pretty huge success. A lot of our craft fair vendors sold out and reached out to me immediately afterwards, asking to sign up for this year already. Um. The kids fair was filled all day. We had bubbles and cotton candy and a bouncy house and that sh- that Sugar Maple, and that was really nice and. I thought the parade was really nice. I know, um, some people asked for more variety and I will do my best to get that. But it was really nice to see so many of the fire departments participating. Um, and. The Dover Fire Department, Police Department being so helpful and matching the quotes through. Um, and so we've asked for seventeen thousand this year. It's a little bit up from last year. Unfortunately, we're seeing an increase in all, is it the same?
It varies the same.
Oh, varies the same. Um, we, things are getting more expensive, but we're doing our best to hold.
It sounds like you're holding.
Uh, we will try to get as many musicians into uh, the restaurants, the park, um, all the different places as well, cause I know that was a huge hit for people.
Anecdotally, I, sorry.
No, go, go ahead.
Uh, anecdotally, I attended this event with my ch- one of my children. Um, it was one of the most well-attended events that I've seen in the town of Dover. And it was lively. There was no point throughout the day where it seemed like it dipped at all. I mean, there was, it was literally something for everyone and it was packed the entire time.
Outstanding. So do we wanna put, let's do each one of these individually. Anybody have questions about the? Blueberry Festival events? Who's gonna make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a grant of seventeen thousand dollars for the Vermont Blueberry Festival to the Chamber of Commerce.
All in favor? Aye. Next, we have up the uh, Independence Day, the fireworks.
Uh, so fireworks, look, we've held at the six thousand seven fifty for a couple of years now. We we, I have no intentions of ever raising that. Um, at least in the near future, unless fireworks skyrocket in pricing, so to speak. The town of Wilmington, the town willing just around fifteen thousand to go towards the fireworks event. Um, this has been such a nice community event. It does draw in visitors and second homeowners. On the White House does something on the lawn that also draws people in, but we're seeing well over two thousand attendees. The fireworks display is. Um, I think we're on the brink of almost being too wrong, but it's a wonderful display. Everyone really loves it. We bring in food vendors, local, obviously. Um, last year we had a local peaceful clean, same um, in the National Anthem, and we'll do that again this year. Um, the challenge this year, and it will happen next year as well as if the Fourth of July is on a Friday, and I think next year it's a Saturday. Um, and so trying to get any of the dates that are connected to those, uh, the minimums went. Just so high. The Fourth of July is a hundred thousand dollar minimum. So the best we could do was July second, which is a Wednesday. On July sixth is the rain date. Uh, they did offer us the Sunday before or July second, which is Sunday after. We just felt like those dates wouldn't draw the same kind of crowd. So the hope is, we'll do it on Wednesday, July second. We'll get a nice group of people and then we'll stay throughout the weekend. We've been burning with not snow, make sure that. We're not on top of each other as far as displays go. I think they're doing very well on Saturday. Um, but I think it could be a really nice long weekend for people.
Yeah, that's too bad that everything's all.
I know.
Strange, yeah.
Yes, was Thursday the third not available, or does that start hitting into the big money?
Big money and all the people who are on the fourth use the third and the fifth as their rain dates. Um, so I couldn't get them. I asked.
So we're doing July second?
Yes.
Right, make a motion that we approve a grant of six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. For the Independence Day fireworks, uh, payable to the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Any more discussion? Pray for good weather.
I know.
Um. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and finally, we have the Wine and Harvest Festival.
Yes, so this is the one that went up a little bit. Um, Wine and Harvest has continued to grow over the years. In twenty twenty-three, we saw a huge skyrocket in attendance. Last year, we saw an increase in our vendors. Um, to the point that I had to start turning people away, which is.
A nice problem.
A nice problem to have. Um, we were hoping for beautiful weather again. I think the timing is always nice. September twenty eighth will be. Up at Mount Snow. We're expecting about eighty vendors again this year, which is the most we had. Um, and hoping to get up to that twenty-five hundred. I think we've been dancing right around there as far as attendees go. Um, a really nice variety of vendors have been coming in. Um, we've started to attract some that are right on the border of Vermont, which is also really exciting. We did have a few last year, but it pulled out last minute because of illness. Um, but hopefully that won't be an issue this year. Um, and Mount Snow has been really cooperative and again is being generous and and letting us use that space.
Any comments? Alright, somebody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a grant of seventeen thousand dollars for the Vermont Wine and Harvest Festival, uh, payable to the Chamber of Commerce.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Really appreciate you.
Sorry, we're running late. Now we need to go to the Board of Liquor Control. Second. Second?
Sorry.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
First, we have first and third class licenses for Snow Republic. And Two Dogs LLC DBA Dover Bar and Grill.
Um, in the past, Snow Republic has had a condition on their approval that had to do with having a parking attendant. Um, and since we don't have the fire chief, police chief here, sorry, Jeanette.
No, you can say it.
Okay, uh, since we don't have a police chief here to ask about it, I'm gonna suggest that we keep it. Uh, this year.
Okay.
Keep the requirement for the parking attendant.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, I've seen their parking there. I've driven by, right, so. They're definitely doing it.
Do you have?
Okay, I spoke with Mike this morning, um, and he had no issues with any of the.
Oh, permits, okay.
But that doesn't mean, I, did we ask him specifically if he'd had any issues with parking?
No, but I I presume if he had, he would have mentioned it.
But that's part of the. Uh, his permit. A condition of.
I would say the fact that they have a parking attendant and they're not having parking problems would make sense. So if we, if they didn't have a parking attendant, we might see the parking issues develop as we had prior to having this requirement. So I'm just suggesting that we maintain that requirement on this particular.
Agreed, second.
Agreed, yes. Alright.
So I make a motion that we approve the first and third class licenses for Snow Republic and Two Dogs LLC DBA Dover Bar and Grill. With the Snow Republic application being subject to the parking attendant requirement as we have had in previous years.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, make a motion that we approve the second class tobacco and tobacco substitute licenses for seven-eleven.
Do I have a second?
Seconds.
Any discussion? Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the outside consumption permits for. Snow Republic, Hermitage Inn, and Two Dogs LLC DBA Dover Bar and Grill. With the Snow Republic application subject to the requirement for a parking attendant.
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to come out?
Motion to come out of deliberate, out of, outside, out of, out of Board of Liquor Control.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, approve the minutes from February four, twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of February fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Sure.
Any corrections, changes? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion to approve the warrants of February fifteenth of three hundred twenty thousand two through two hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Got it. Any discussion about the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
We have.
What?
We have an FYI. So this, I really want, I wanna read this in in public, this uh. The uh, thank you note for regarding the STR ordinance. To the town of Dover Select Board, thank you for your careful research and valuable considerations. As you created a new STR regist- registry ordinance. As a longtime owner of a small STR, I appreciate the Select Board recognize the value that most STRs bring to Dover. My own STR began its life in the thirties as a traditional Vermont camp. The opportunity to rent it has allowed me to slowly expand its footprint and amenities, and it grew. Into, from a camp to in a lovely small cottage. STR renters are carefully selected and loved over. So many new people have been introduced to the area. And all that it offers. I don't rent in the winter, so each new trail that opens, music at the park. New outdoor opportunities for guests is appreciated. So, kudos to the team who worked on the STR regis- registration and requirements. Regul- regulation is warranted for health and safety of our guests, our neighbors, and the town of Dover. Thank you for reviewing data, for going slowly and for being thoughtful. Short-term rentals support the Deer Valley economy and have an impact on the community, and those should be positive and beneficial. With appreciation. Dana Kin- Kenny. Uh, oh Darva, Darva Kenny, Ice Pond Camp, North Street East, over. That's a very nice letter.
They're installing the payment system as we speak. Everything's complete.
Yes.
I, I will just, I think if I could, I'd just like to echo that. I mean, most of, all the properties we manage, most, everybody's pretty tickled because it's saving. Their boards a lot ahead of it, cause you know, hey guys, you're gonna be that, they were all thinking of doing it, so.
No, I I, I think, I think that this is uh. I think we did it the right way, and I hope, I hope. I hope we're all.
I hope he does what we think.
I know, I hope so too.
And as we have with other programs, we live and learn, and if we find things need to be fixed, we can hear some.
Alright, so we have pre-town meeting next Tuesday, six o'clock at the Dover Town Hall on the Common. We have town meeting March fourth, ten AM Dover Town Hall. We have a special uh, board organizational meeting Wednesday, the fifth, at six-thirty here. And the regional select board member gathering, March twelfth, and New Brook Fire Department, and you know. And I already registered.
I have not registered yet, but I will.
Uh, liaison reports? Okay, we are going to go into executive session. Is that a period, multiple for personnel, for tourner?